Good evening, I'm Dr. Graves, the Vice President of the Purson School Board. Today, I welcome you. Thank you all for coming out to our second restructuring town hall meeting. Last week, we introduced to the community option one, two, and three. Tonight, we will do the same. We know that this will not be news for many of you, and at this meeting, many of you will have more questions since the news has spread across the district. Some of you may have already made up your minds in regards to which option may be the best for you as a parent, as a student, as a taxpayer, teacher, staff, or community member. I ask you tonight to take a step back from your already formed decision and envision what you would like to see in our district. As a parent, what matters to you? Is it a safer environment? Is it a school that is kind of bad? That have all the arts? As a student, what matters to you? Is it a place where all teachers know your name? Is it a place where you can call your own? Where you have access to all sports? As a taxpayer, what matters to you? Is it a school that is accredited? As a teacher or staff, what matters to you? Is it that all children have a passion for learning and you're paid what you're worth? As a member of this community, what do you envision? What matters? Is it that all the students from this district become contributing members of this community? Whatever it is that you have envisioned, we have the options today to make that vision come true. We must look outside the box and do things differently than what we have done. We have the opportunity to be the greatest school in the school district in the nation, and it will take each and every one of you that are in this room and that supports our district, that believes in our district, to make this happen. So I ask you tonight to join us on this journey. That's it.
Thank you, Dr. Graves. Welcome, everyone. We're glad you're here with us this evening. So I'm here to do just a little bit of housekeeping on the process for getting your questions heard this evening. I'm Kevin Hampton. I'm the Executive Director for Communications for the School District, and so I'll be helping to facilitate this, and my team will be helping as well. Hopefully, when you came in, you grabbed one of these green cards. During the course of Dr. Davis's presentation this evening and after, various members of the cabinet and the district administration team will be wandering around and picking up these cards. So I'd ask you to do two things. One, put your name on it because we want to be able to follow up with you and your email address in case we need to follow up on something. If you will write a question rather than just a comment, we'll gather these cards, bring them up to the board, and they will then ask the questions on Dr. Davis. So it's important that, just like on Jeopardy!, phrase it in the form of a question. And then he will get to as many of these as he can this evening. And then the remainder that he doesn't get to tonight, we'll get those answers online. In fact, we have answers to questions from last week on the website. When you leave tonight, feel free to pick up one of these half-sheets that will be out on the table out there. It has more information for you to continue to stay engaged after we go on past this evening. A number of text-in questions if you think of something afterwards that you want an answer to, you can ask questions that way too. And it will give you a link on the website to be able to see the video from tonight and answers to questions that are shared this evening. If you have questions on what to do with this, feel free to raise your hand and somebody will help you with that. But again, as you write your questions on this this evening, if you'll just hold that up, somebody will come and pick it up and then bring it down to the board. And I think at this time, we're ready for Dr. Davis, our Supreme Attorney.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
I'm going to jump right into it. I've had an opportunity to talk to some students. I also try to talk to students about most issues that we deal with in the district because we often sometimes leave students out and they're the ones who are making decisions for it if they didn't have a voice. But glad to see so many students here tonight. If you're a student at Purson Forest, we just stand up for them. Thank you so much. Thank you for being here because what we're going to be talking about has everything to do with you and your future. So we're going to jump right in. One thing I will say, and I want to emphasize again from last week's learning was, please make sure if you have a question, you put it on one of those cards. I struggled a little bit at the end when we were asking and answering questions last week. We had them on sheets, and so trying to fumble through that and really think about what the questions were, we wanted to be as respectful as we can to make sure we answered the questions that you have. So please make sure you get a green card. We'll have folks walking around. Take those questions when you're ready to hand them to one of us. Just wave it a little bit, and you'll see folks just coming in taking it from you, and we'll sort those and in this presentation, we'll go through those. So I'm going to jump right in. Specifically, we have on our website, in the advertised part of it, we probably got a phone call, a text, or something talking specifically about these three town hall meetings focusing on restructuring our district. And let me say that what I'll talk about tonight goes with the entire game. Not only with kindergarten, preschool, but also pre-k. We will talk a little bit about, and hopefully, there was some questions about as well, looking at how we restructure our early ed program that fits right into our K-12 program on to thinking about 16, which is through on this college. So we had a meeting last Monday at the floor. We have a meeting here tonight at MSB, and then we'll be at North on next Monday. And then we'll have some other meetings throughout the community for folks who could not make it to one of these three. We are going to be in people's homes with small groups that could make it. We're going to be at Starbuck's at the library, the Purson Library, the Forest Library. So if you didn't get here tonight, or if you were here and want more information, and I invite you to go to the website and get more information, because we'll be throughout the community probably get over the next few, for the next two months. So really, this is about the future of education for children in our district. And as a parent, a student in our district, my son's education is important to me and my wife, and I'm asking you to ensure it's important to you whether you have a child, or have a child, or will have a child, or have cousins, or whomever. This is our community, and having a great education system is paramount. And so everything we want to talk about tonight has everything to do with preparing our students, the students, the young ladies and gentlemen that you saw standing just a moment ago. It is about the future. And so everything we want to talk about will be concerning that. Now let me say before I get into any of this that no decision has been made about anything. The board will make a final decision. And I'll talk about that a little bit later on. And what these meetings are for, they're for for us to gather as much information as we can to get your feedback. And I will compile that, our team will compile that and we'll give the board as much information as possible so that we have adequate information to give the board and then make a decision about which option is chosen. So I have a quick video I'm going to show you, and this is really about the future of education in America. And I'll talk a little bit about early ed, actually a lot about early ed, and then how that goes all the way into our high schools. But let me say, when you look at this video, I want you to get into this mind right just quickly, that in order for us to be competitive, not just in Missouri, in America, but on this globe, in order for us to be competitive, our children, our students to be competitive, they have to be prepared. And we can't keep doing high school in the ways that we're doing it across this country. And I say that because I'm a first generation college, raised by my mom and grandma. Those women were powerful, and they taught me a whole lot. And they didn't have the access to college as I did. And so what we want to do is to make sure that every child, irrespective of their race, creed, or code, irrespective of their zip code, whatever their experience was, that every child deserves equity. Equity is giving them access to the quality of education, not just a diploma. A diploma isn't enough. Children need education well. They need to be able to read and write well, speak well, and rap well, know as much as they can, so they're ready for whatever they choose in life. So take a look at this video, it's a short video, a couple minutes, and I'll take it from there.
This is America in 1900. This is a car in 1900, and a phone, and a high school. This is America in 1950, and a car, and a phone, and a high school. This is today, a car, a phone, a high school. Whoa, back at home. So cars are now this, and phones are now this, but high schools are still that. American high schools are based on the same model, and it's been over 100 years.
Wow, that's a long time.
But why? In 1900, it makes sense for high schools to prepare students for that. But in 2018, shouldn't they be preparing students from this, and this, and even this? So why are we still granting the role that's based on the time a student spends in a seat? Why are we still using the Carnegie unit, which was developed in 1906 and says the formula for learning is four years sitting at a desk multiplied by one subject taught at a time? Equals, "Students ready for the future? All questions execute a super school project as the way I'm going to help answer." There was a competition. Not that kind of competition, this kind. The kind where communities across the country come together to rethink high school so every student, everywhere, can be prepared for the future. And that's big, like really big. Like the largest open call in history to redesign a high school day. This is the hard work that went into it. 10,000 people across the country became school builders, and thanks to them, there will be brand-new ways of teaching and learning. Starting with America's first super schools. Schools that will let students learn by doing, that focus on the future, and spark curiosity. Schools that build community, unleash potential, and solve real-world problems. Schools that will ask their students what they think and will actually listen to them. Students like me.
So there are two words I just want to briefly read quickly because I've never heard of these just a little bit as we go into this presentation. First one is equity. Equity is that all students are given access to support and support to obtain a high school education that prepares them for college and more career as they choose. That's equity, getting access to it. Physical responsibilities assured. The board and administration are making decisions that effectively and efficiently put tax dollars to use for getting all children well, ready for college and career. And I'll say that it really doesn't matter what students choose because they're choice, but what we have to do is make sure they're ready for it. And so let me say that especially when we talk about comparing students for life beyond high school. I was having some conversations this last week specifically with some partners around the country about how kids are prepared for some of the jobs that are coming. And if you remember, Amazon was looking for six to start their, you know, headquarters, but one of their distribution centers in San Diego, and Central was being considered, and other places around this country. Let me tell you that one of those factors that they always consider in places like Amazon and other huge corporations, they look at the education system of the schools in the local community. And the more, the better educated kids are, students are, as near the future, then that has a huge impact on the decisions that big companies make when it comes to putting different distribution centers, companies, corporations into local communities. Here's a quick view of our map right now. We have about 45 buildings that we currently have. One of the differences I already admitted ago was physical responsibilities. Some of our buildings are at 30% capacity, which means that in just a quick example, if you have 1,000 seats in that school, we have about 300 students in that building, that's not efficiency, and that's not the mission of tax dollars. And we have a couple of buildings, actually more than a couple of buildings, that are that way. And so what we're looking at is the entire district. We're looking at our enrollment, and we're also looking at the building spaces that we have to make a decision about what the board does next in terms of current buildings that we have. So we have just a quick view of what our enrollment has been over the last 13 years. I guess it is 2005, 2018. So that line looks dark. But when you look at census data and some of the other things, I've raised, as I've been here, this is my therapy year, there were some projections when some redistricting and work was done back when Johnson Law Bastard was there, if you remember that. And there were some projections that our enrollment will be much less than what it is right now. But if you look at those numbers, 12,250,000, and we're actually a little bit better than 10,250,000. We dropped about 1,800 students over the course of the last 10, 12 years. That is a decline, but it's not a decline that we thought it would be. Okay, because, you know, populations shift, and they don't shift necessarily like sometimes the numbers tell us they will. And so you have to look at those trends. And so while our population has shifted some, we still have a significant population here, and we need to be doing a whole lot more efficient than how we're using our current resources. So currently, we're around 10,500 or so in terms of our K through 12 students. When you add in our early ed students, we have, it takes us over 11,000 students. So here is option one. We have three options we have presented last week. We'll talk about tonight. And I want to go in a little bit detailed. And as you're going through these and listening to what I'm saying here, you have those three cards, write down the questions that you have. We have three options that the board is considering going, using, or deciding on over the next couple of months. Here's option one. We currently have three high schools. This keeps those three high schools, option one does. What it does is it changes the boundary lines. So I have a little red dot here. I'm trying to sort of show you what I'm talking about. Area one is MSB, which is our purpose. This is where we are right now. Area two is the floor. And area three is the floor north. What happens is with option one, the boundary lines change. And so in option one, and this new option, this line, this is a third, a natural boundary. This is airport, chamber, airport. That is that line. And so everybody who lives on that line or south of that would go to MSB. And that's the new boundary line for option one. Option two, here's the second boundary line, and that is St. Anthony. All you know where St. Anthony is, in Florence. So between St. Anthony and Airport Chamber, that would be McClure's boundaries. So that includes 270. There is 270, that yellow line here. This is St. Anthony. Everybody between, south of St. Anthony all the way to Airport Chamber would be in McClure's attendance zone. And then everybody north of St. Anthony would be in McClure North's attendance zone. Now, take a look at these boxes over here. I'm going to make them a little bit larger. Area one, which is, which is our purpose. Right now, MSB has about 460 some-line students. This building is built for way more than that. We could put, I'll put the questions. We could put probably twice as many students that we have right now in here. Now, so we are looking at 863 some-line students for MSB in this option, option one. Okay, now take a look at these bottom three. P2, 3, 5, and 6, 8. That is the departure from what it currently is. Right now, our school is set up so that we have kindergartens through sixth grade. We did change this boundary line, and we're looking at it for all of them because they're all our middle school sixth grade. But what we also have to take a look at is that it's really important for us to think about our early issues and include them in this K-12 or pre-K-12 process. And so what we've done is, in all of these options, you will see this throughout, is that we have P2 schools. And P2 schools begin to pull in our three- and four-year-old students. So what it does is it provides an option for parents who have three- and four-year-old students who currently put their students in, you know, Head Start or daycare or other options that you may already have. Then this would provide an option in the public school. And we're looking at transitioning that work. I'm not an early ed, a person I didn't get trained on, middle high school lab. And so we have Mr. Hurd, who is our director of early ed, and being a right early ed teacher who may be here tonight as well, engaging in conversations about what that transition work looks like. But we're specifically looking at all three of these options, PKU schools. And that again includes three-year-olds and four-year-olds. Now, 3 through 5 schools are a little bit different than what it currently is. Now it's K6, K5, K6 schools. Now here's the piece that I think is really important, and I want parents in particular to hear this. If we have 3 through 5 schools, testing begins across this country in almost every state in third grade. And it goes from third grade to eighth grade, and then in the high school, you have, of course, tests. And it depends on what state you're in that determines what high school test that you take. Now, what this does with our pre-K2 schools is it takes away some of that pressure that principals are facing when talking about performance of our students who have currently third grade in their current elementary school. So what does that do for a school that's pre-K2 school? It gives principals of those pre-K2 schools an opportunity to focus on child development. One of the problems that we're seeing in many of our schools is that when students are giving us, if they haven't had early ed interventions before, and I didn't, I was one of those students who couldn't afford it. So I didn't go to, my grandma was already there. And so when students are coming to us now and don't have that early ed experience, then we're finding a lot of students having 1,000,000 just haven't had the opportunity to be socialized in an environment with other students. And what we have to take a look at, time at the end, is data. And we looked at data for two cohorts of students. A cohort of students who gone through our, through our early ed program. And we compared that to a cohort of students who didn't go through our program, of all the other students. And every time in DLA, in Sunday Arts, and math, students who have gone through our early ed program always do better. I mean, hands-down, every time, every year. Which says a lot about not only the futures in our early ed program, but the kinds of experiences that students are getting, being prepared for third grade by the time they get to those testing grades. And so we think this is a game changer and a pipeline builder all the way to our high schools. We have got to make sure our students come to us ready and students who have background, some of them, didn't have the resources. And so you can't charge the child for that. What we have to do is make sure we provide every student who comes to our schools with that kind of quality. And what we are already doing is we're identifying students who were born in our district. We've got them live birthdayed. We've got them in Ed+. And we're looking at the live birthday because I want to know where the babies are, and I want them in our program. Now, you know, this is no attack on any other early ed program in the district at all. What I am telling you is that we have highly qualified teachers in our early ed program, master degrees and much, not experience. And it would be so much if we could get all the students of Purson Forest going through our early ed so that when they get into third grade, they're more than ready for it. So you'll see this throughout. We have sixth grade schools, that's the middle school model, about 593 students there. And then without 912, it would be about 784, 800 students. That would be specifically here at MSB. Area two, this is the option one. And area two, that's the floor. Same thing with pre-K2. And you'll get that top number. Right now, McClure has about 1,000 students. So that would give us a few more students. And what we're trying to do is to balance the numbers all across the district. Right now, North has about 1,450, 1,500 students. And so what we're doing is changing those lines, balancing the population across the board. And if you remember, we said a minute ago, we have some schools that are at 30 and 40% capacity. That solves all the problems, but it's totally responsive to more efficiently using all of our school buildings. Okay, so this is McClure's number, and all the schools that be there to McClure. And then the last area in option one, still in option one here, is McClure North, and that gives them about 1,051 students. And we've gone through the numbers. The numbers obviously change some, and they will as everything grows with enrollment. But what happens is in this option one, it balances all three high schools. Again, option one uses all three schools as they are. It changes the boundary lines, and it more balances the numbers of schools, I'm sorry, numbers of students in each one of our high schools and all the way through all those senior schools. Okay, that's option one. I have three options for you. Here's option two. And I'm going to keep it here again. I can come back to this same card in a minute. Option two is a little different. Option two gives us two traditional comprehensive high schools and one 912 state school. Option one, area one, this would all the students in, and so 270, that line right here, this is 270. That would be the national boundary. And all the students south of 270 will go to McClure. All the students north of 270 will go to McClure North. And then, which is our purpose, will be our 912 state school. The numbers are here. Area one, we have about 1,557 students that would be in our McClure High School at that time. And option two would do the option that was chosen. And likewise, with the numbers stratified from P3K schools to A3. And then area two, this is McClure North. We have about 1,441 students. Both those high schools used to hold those numbers, so that would even put the schools at more capacity. And then again, MSB would become the state school. That's option two. Two high schools, traditional, and then one state school, 912. And then we have option three. Option three is A3. And option three gives one high school for the entire district. One high school for the entire district. And that means that it would call for a new school building. Okay, and so let me just show you quickly what those numbers look like. That one new high school would have about 2,900 to 9,000 students. Now, that number actually would be a little bit less because many of those students would be at the state school in option three's chosen. It would be one new high school. We have 740 students in ninth grade, about 739 students in tenth grade. And then we have our 11 through 12. And so all the students would be on one campus. And so we have about 1,500 to 1,900 students that would be juniors and seniors. That would be option three. Option three again is one comprehensive high school in the entire district. One school, one comprehensive high school. And then MSB would be our 912 state school. So I'm almost at the end. I know there are a lot of some questions, and so if you could go ahead and write your questions down, and we'll start walking around and getting those questions. But let me just say these last few slides really quickly, and then I'm going to spend the rest of time answering questions and engaging with you. But let me just say real quickly that we have the three town hall meetings. This is the second of the three. We also have, we also have two of our supporters here, Ed and Porsha, both are from MTT, and they are doing an assessment on all of our buildings. Just stand alone, just give them a round of applause. I'm really appreciate it. Both of them are, not only are they engineers, architects, but they're also educators. They want good schools, the teachers, administrators, superintendents. But they're examining every one of our school buildings. If you remember back in December, you know, so we had a meeting in this room, and it was specifically about those and central closing. No school hasn't been decided upon yet to close or any of those kinds of things. We sat in, and these two professionals, the editors of, they are looking at every one of our school buildings across this entire district. And they are doing a building assessment, looking at our grounds, looking at our infrastructure, looking at the educational suitability. And then they will give the board information that will be a part of the bigger equation. That's what the basic system is, the building assessment system. They're looking at every school building to see which ones are suitable, uh, and are in good shape, and those that may, may need more repair. Um, so, uh, we also have online on our website, please go there, there's an opportunity, we have surveys, we have lots of ways where you can give, give input. Uh, and then we'll get all the data put together, and from there we'll give it to the board. And probably around, uh, Octoberish is when the board may make a decision about which option to go to. We are now in April, so we have about six months to do as much engagement as we possibly can, to talk and ask questions, and, uh, come to community meetings, so that we can make sure that everybody forces a part of this final decision. Let me say before we start with our questions, no decision has been made about anything yet, okay? There has been no decision at all. All I've shown you are three potential options that the board can choose from. Uh, the board will listen tonight, we listened last week, will listen Monday, to everything that people are saying. Uh, and we will have some other meetings in the community, and when the board votes around Octoberish, if you will, then that's when the decision will be made. So you have plenty of time to, to have your voices heard and to engage. Okay, so with that, we'll start with our questions. Okay, thank you. I will, I will go back, thank you. So let me actually go back a little bit more than that. So, uh, let me specifically focus on the STEM nine twelve high school. Uh, we currently have a, a six-eight model that is, uh, we, we actually purchased, before I even got here, uh, the community passed the farm, and, uh, we were able to, uh, really, this is really, uh, been negotiating with the company or whatever, uh, folks that we bought the building from. We repurposed, uh, buildings over on Dunn Road, and so now we have a six-eight STEM STEM model. STEM, STEM grad is science, technology, engineering, arts and math. Uh, so we currently have about a hundred and fifty students, next year we'll have about two hundred, and every year those numbers increase. Uh, that, uh, uh, program has been specifically designated to support our students who have been identified as gifted, or our students who, um, are, uh, are having a business for the arts. Uh, we have a good population of students that we often forget about, and that is our gifted population. Uh, that population is about sixty percent African American, is about thirty-eight percent, uh, white. Um, it is a population of students that needs support, and so that's one of the reasons that, that is there. Uh, also, the nine twelve, uh, facility would be here, and so our students who are in six-eight, uh, then will come here if that one of those options is chosen, but, uh, Berkeley, uh, McFlure South Berkeley would be the nine twelve state model. Now, one of the other things, um, that I, I did say is in option one, let me go back quickly, in option one, if the board were to choose option one, what would happen to the students who were in our state program for nine twelve? Because the board has already voted, uh, about a month or so ago, to move our nine twelve state students to McFlure North High School for next year, uh, because of the space and the, uh, advanced placement courses opportunities that students have. Now, let me say that, uh, AP, Advanced Placement, every one of our high schools, every one of MSB, uh, McFlure and McFlure North, more students are taking AP classes than ever before. In fact, we weren't looking specifically at MSB's numbers today, and we have more students taking AP classes here than ever before. In fact, we're looking at AP more, yes. This is why students are taking advanced placement classes, because what does that do? What it does is it will give students access to college level classes in high school. And there's a, that's clear research that backs up timing and students who take at least one AP class in high school, are much more likely to go on to college. Now, if students do well in those AP classes, they will get college credit while they're in high school. And that's at every one of our schools. Now, and after an option is chosen, every student will have access to that equity. What we want is for students to graduate from high school at any one of our schools, whatever the structure is, uh, so that they have college credit, because if a student can get fifteen to thirty hours of college credit by the time they get out of high school, that's a year's worth of tuition that students more have to pay, uh, depending on what school they go to. And let me say that with, with the college tuition now, uh, here's a graduate from college with nine to date. And if we can deal with that issue while we're in high school, then that means a whole lot. The other piece that I wanted to say was about the sixth grade that I didn't speak to in, uh, option two. So right here, I didn't say this, but right here, this is a little bit different, uh, it's still the six-eight model, but we would have a sixth grade center, and option, um, two, and I think also an option three. Now, uh, a sixth grade center, so we know that two grade levels, uh, uh, is where we have more challenges with students transitioning. And that is in sixth grade where we have higher rates of failure and also, uh, in ninth grade. Uh, students tend to struggle in those areas, and typically, on average, you have six-eight schools and you have nine-twelve schools. And that has, that has something to do with it splitting away while we have those students struggling in sixth grade, and then struggling again when they get to ninth grade. Uh, so we are proposing in options two and three is to have sixth grade centers where all of our sixth graders in the district, uh, would be, uh, in one space, uh, in Area One, and then also in a space in Area Two. And the same is the truth for option number three as well. Uh, I think I got all of the options that kind of. I was rushing because I know there are a lot of questions, and I saw parts moving around, I was trying to rush through it, because I really want to get to get to questions so that, uh, we can be on the same page. Uh, so those are options, option one, keeping all three high schools and changing the boundary lines. Uh, Chamber Airport, that would be the boundary line in south of that, below the MSB from Chamber Airport all the way to St. Anthony. That would be McFlure in the middle, and then above that, uh, north of the St. Anthony, uh, would be McFlure North, that's option one. Keeping all three high schools as they are and changing those boundary lines. Option two would be, uh, two comprehensive high schools, uh, McFlure, everybody south of two seventy, uh, McFlure North, everybody, uh, north of two seventy. And then MSB would be our nine twelve state, uh, school. And then option three, one high school, one new brand high school for the entire district, uh, and where everybody could go to the same school. Uh, and then, uh, MSB would still be our nine twelve, uh, state program. Okay, that's option one, option two, and option three. So with that, uh, let me, um, defer to the board and, uh, go along with some of his questions.
Can you hear me? Hello? How's that? All right. Uh, we're doing something a little bit different tonight, uh, and hope that we can get through as many questions as possible. So you're gonna see us jumping back and forth. So that's what we're doing here is, uh, going to them, casualizing and making fun of their questions. So, um, you briefly hit upon this one, but have to do the timeline. Um, so what is the timeline to begin, to complete, get through all the options?
Very good. Um, I don't know if that's up here, Kevin, is that timeline here? Not here?
Not here.
You could get to it, I think I have a, uh, so that, that's a great question. And let me say this before I get to the timeline itself, uh, we have quite a few, uh, other folks who work on our team, and so there's a question that I don't have the expertise, and I'm not a private, uh, uh, hour crew, I'm gonna defer to someone else, uh, depending on what that question may be. So with the timeline, we actually took the timeline all the way back to December of, uh, seventeen. So we had the first meeting here on District Report, and we, then that's when we had a lot of, uh, concerns about closing local temples. So we, we had to start it up early, we were gonna, this is starting January anyway with our community engagement pieces. So the timeline actually goes back to there, actually goes further back, because we've been working on this for the last year and a half in terms of restructuring private, because of the capacity for our schools. Uh, so from, uh, from areas, so from December all the way through August of twenty nineteen. So there's quite a few things that are going on. We're right, right about here right now, uh, and so what we're doing now is having these community engagement meetings. If you, and you probably can't see this that well, you can absolutely go online and see the same, uh, the same thing. So we're going to be having community engagement meetings right now, and we'll go through, uh, May and do some more, as I said, in Starbucks and some, uh, other areas, supply for in our community. Uh, over the summer though, uh, I introduced, uh, Ed Porsha just a moment ago, so they're working diligently right now on our, uh, building assessment system. But let me slow down and say this, because I really need to hear this well, especially in terms of concerns about closing these schools, yes. So, no decision has been made closing these schools, all right? Now, let me say this part, um, the board needs to have accurate information about the, um, the structure of every school building, right? Those school buildings, uh, in terms of the cost of upkeep, uh, we're, we're looking at physical stability, technology readiness, we'll look at all the systems in the school, and so they are doing their work right now. They've been meeting with, uh, you know, with, uh, teachers and, uh, administrators, and talking specifically, uh, with our professionals about what kinds of things are needed in every one of these school buildings. Okay, so they're doing the assessment work right now. Uh, we expect to get, um, a result of all those assessments of every one of these buildings around, uh, the latter part of June, first of July. Okay, now, uh, Ed and Porsha are gonna do a presentation, we're gonna have them to join me, and they're actually gonna take the, the wheel, and do a presentation to go specifically through all of those pieces, to talk about what the buildings look like, why this is there, they'll give each building a grade. This is research-based information, and other school districts across the state and this country have used this same approach. Because the only people who make the decision about what happens here is the board, you let them, they make the decision, I don't. All I do is give information to them so they have the accurate information to make a decision. They'll help us with that. Uh, and so once we get that information, we'll start some re-engagement, the summer's gonna be happening. Won't be probably as much unless you want us to, uh, but we'll listen to you, uh, but we'll do some work, you know, in the summertime, but we'll start back up again when school starts back in August. Uh, around October is when the board may make a decision about, uh, what options they will choose, okay? And that will happen based on tonight, uh, next Monday, last Monday, community meetings, surveys, all the information that I've been referring to. Uh, they'll look at all of that data, and then the board will make a decision around October as to which option, uh, we will choose.
So, Jim, the next question, oh, Dr. Davis, I'm sorry. What's the most physically sound option?
So, um, you know, so I, I, I said this before I break off my phone, and, you know, my phone, I didn't know until I got older, I realized my phone on homegirl house back in the sixties. Um, she cleaned up the power in the daytime, it was a second job. I say that, I don't wanna say how physically prudent she was, uh, at teaching us how important it is to use your dollars away. Uh, so that's a great question, because we take that same austere approach to think of our own current spaces. It is not physically sound for laying the wages. Now, you know, I, I totally am not at all trying to distinguish anybody's, uh, feelings and thoughts about our current spaces. But let me say, if we are going to provide a kind of education that we don't contribute, it's gonna take dollars to do that. Uh, and, you know, uh, what will be the most physically sound approach, uh, I, I won't necessarily give you the answer to that in my opinion, but what I will tell you is that if every one of the three options that we've chosen, uh, that we put up here, from pre-K all the way through eighth grade, uh, there's some strong consistencies up in that middle school piece that change in option two and three. Um, you know, it's gonna cost if we go with option three, option three with one big high school. And that's a huge cost involved. And let's just say, now, I'll just hypothetically play out this scenario, okay? So if option three gets chosen, right, that's something that would have to come to the community in, um, uh, the, the form of a bond, or the community to vote on. So then, if, if that is something that the community doesn't support, we can't go forward without your input, right? So, the board chooses option in October, and let's just say for example it is option three. Then we would have to begin preparing ourselves for on, or whether that, that be on, uh, the ballot in April of twenty nineteen. And then there it is where the community would come forward and say, MSB won, we'll be on. Okay, now, let me say that, um, whatever happens in October, and I don't know what that's gonna be, whether it be option one, two, or three. Whatever happens in October, if the board chooses option two based on the defense they got, they choose option one. From October going forward, we will put together, uh, a, a, a master plan that will be laid out for three, five to ten years. We cannot do that until the board decides on which option we choose, but we gotta be able to give the, give the direction on that, okay? That's why this is really important, that could be really important all of the other meetings. So as far as being physically sound, let me say that in order for us to do any kind of work in high schools, we're gonna have to do some restructuring, okay? Period, in order for you to be able to provide the wall.
All right, there's been a lot of questions about option three, uh, which is really a surprise to many of us. Uh, so I'll combine, uh, two of them, and there's several of them in here that are similar, but, uh, one is, uh, has a decision been made that if we went with option three, where that high school would be at? Um, and to think back on that, um, what is the educational benefit of option three?
Yeah, so, um, so there's some obvious places, right? Uh, one would be where currently McFlure is, and the other would be where currently McFlure North is. Uh, we've looked at the acreage in both those spaces. Um, so, you know, if McFlure's chosen, then we have to put a brand new facility where McFlure is right now. If McFlure North is chosen, we have to put a brand new facility where that school currently is right now. Uh, those are the two spaces that we've already owned, uh, that would be the most suitable and would make the most physical sense, uh, to do. Now, certainly, there's always another option, that's the, you know, price of the land in our district, but would that be physically sound? Absolutely not, I don't know. But again, I only provide as much information to the board as they need so that they can make a decision based on what even they can view. So, that's the, uh, to that first part, and then the second part. I'll settle for that first part.
Yeah, interesting, so then?
Yes, uh, so, um, there's a bit of a visit of having option three with one high school. Um, I, I think it abounds. Um, so let me say this, and I'm gonna say it as carefully as I can. Um, and, since I moved here, and the high school I graduated from is similar to MSB, it's the high school in my, uh, I'm from North Carolina. And I, I went to the high school, uh, that was, um, on the east side of town, uh, then we had another high school in the middle of town, and we didn't like that school, and then they had a high school on the west side of town, which was like, totally burning, okay? So I went to, um, MSB in our community. And since I've been here, I've had so many conversations with people of all races, of, of, the black and white in, in particular, talking specifically about race. Uh, and so what I can tell you is that, uh, race is always something that's on the table in our community, I mean, from twenty fourteen, before the end of the pandemic. And what I think is really important, and I'm no expert, I, I'm not even a expert on black folk, I'm not an expert on jokes, in my experience. Uh, so I can only speak for me, but what I can tell you is that, uh, we have to make sure that all of our children in this community be educated well. So race is always a part, and I say that only to say, and talking about the educational benefits. Um, so, uh, people have conception of all of our schools in our, in our district. And the question I often get from the board and from people in the community is that, are we giving access to all of our students across the district? Our students at MSB get access to, uh, what students at McFlure get into, uh, students at McFlure get access to what North get in, and, and vice versa. So there's always that question that's out there. Uh, when I say equity, option three is equity that is financed, right? Because what it does is it puts all of our teachers, and sixty-two percent of our teachers have master degrees, some have doctoral degrees. Sixty-two percent have at least a master's degree in our, in our district. We will put those resources in one place. Now, we partner with equal opportunity schools, this is, we're going to our second year, uh, we had a hopeful year this last year. That's where we identify students who are taking advanced placement classes. I just had a meeting the other day, we got approved for North, uh, to have an international bachelor laureate school. Now, you may not know what that is, or you may know what that is, but that's lock-in to advanced placement classes. And we have, and one of the questions that we asked was, is, uh, if that's at North now, then what happened when, and if we were to do it for all schools in one? So that's something that we're working through. I say all that to say how powerful it is to be, to have all those resources in one state of our facility, that will provide our students kind of quality that will be second to none. Uh, so the benefits abound, uh, you know, when you talk about athletics, that, that's another question that's come to me from students about, about athletics. We've reached that condition since last week, uh, and we've, uh, looked at some of the policies there. Uh, and what I can tell you with athletics is that our focus will always be on academics, because academics come first. I love sports, I love football, but academics come first. Do you have to get academics in order to get to especially Division one school? I want to see more students go to Division one school, uh, but what I also want to see is students prepared for that, right? Uh, so having all those resources in one place has a number of benefits. I think for me, the most important piece though, as a parent, as a dad, what's the, most important piece is, you know, um, those of you who have gone to school, you know yourself, that, uh, you know, college is expensive. And we cannot keep sending students to school, and then they graduate from college, for those who do, for thirty and forty thousand dollars a day. And in order, in order to make a dent in that, we gotta change the way we do high schools, the video I showed you earlier. Which means that more students have to begin getting college level classes while they're in high school. And so what we gotta think differently about is, can students do that in high school? They actually need to get in. Our students, I don't care where you, where you're from, what your zip code is, whether you're a freshman, freshman college student, students can do it. But they have to have the kind of, uh, experiences in middle school and high school that prepares them for those rigorous kinds of classes. It is not enough for any child, no matter what color you are, what zip code you're from. It is not enough for children to just graduate from high school, put up a piece of paper that says the diploma, and they still struggle reading. We got students who graduate from high school in our district that are still struggling to read it. And so don't tell me that all kids can't do well, because I know that any, I've seen it happen right here in our district. But what we have to do is make some strong decisions about the importance of quality education while they're in high school. I'm passionate about this because, you know what, I had teachers who said I would never do anything. And it's personal to me because, uh, you don't know my walking, if you walk in my shoes. And I'm telling you, my own experience as an African American in the South was challenging. And whatever your race, creed, or color, let me tell you that what we have to do is make sure that our children have access to those kinds of classes. One big high school I think would have huge benefits, I could go on another question, let me stop.
So your next question is about discipline. How would discipline be handled with all three options as already is a concern?
With option three or?
All three options.
Oh, okay, okay. So, we have, uh, excuse me, expectation, um, code that was redesigned last year. This year is the first year we've been using that, um, new policy. Let me explain what it means, okay, and, and a nutshell, and that's real working to, so don't, don't even be hesitant that, uh, I, I'm saying we fixed it because we have now. Okay, we still have issue. Let me tell you, I was elementary school principal, I was a middle school principal, and I was a high school principal. I taught middle school and I taught high school. So I've been in the, from, from kindergarten all the way up, actually pre-teen all the way up. And, and let me tell you that one of the things that was important to me as a principal was that my students knew I cared about them, that I loved them, but you're gonna get your education. I, I asked my grandma, and that went back. Uh, and let me say that, uh, we revised our expectation code because when I got here, one of the things I heard, uh, many people in the community saying is, we gotta deal with discipline. Discipline, this, I heard that more than anything else. The issue to us is, what about the kids who come to school every day and do what they're supposed to do, uh, and then the other, uh, ten percent or how many of them there are that are calling, getting the problem? And you're absolutely right, because ninety percent of our kids come to school every day and do right. You don't have, you don't have a problem either. They come to school, they come to learn, they do what mama, daddy, grandma, do, or grandma, whomever is raising them, and we have a few that need more support. We can't just throw children out. What we have to do is make sure that we give them the support they need so that they can be successful. They just have to figure it out, get their children, whether they're gonna be, you know, what you call kids. Uh, but, but they have to, so they have to figure it out, but what we did was we changed these students' expectation code. So now, if a student at, I was used to school, um, Holman, which is the, uh, one of the furthest south, and Waywood is one of the furthest north. So if students, I, one of those schools had an issue with, um, chewing gum, just use the DAS exam. Then administrators in every school will respond virtually the same way. What, what I was finding when I was looking at the data was that if you were, depending on what school you were at, would determine what kind of outcome came to this child, and that's not bad, and that's not empty. So what we did was, we pulled together most of all, uh, propositions, we have teachers, uh, not as many teachers as I'd like, and we want more, we just had a meeting a couple weeks ago, so I invited more teachers to be a part of it. Administrators, myself, and others, Mr. Bill, these that, uh, committed, and we revised the code. Now, there's more to do with that code, but if any one of those three options, we're gonna keep going forward with that code. We have been partnering with, uh, Metropolitan, uh, Metropolitan Coalition United, uh, care, I don't care if it's in here. Uh, but we've been partnering with them, thinking specifically about suspensions. Listen, suspensions don't solve the problem, because if you did, then we hasn't great, uh, numbers because our kids will go home and come back better. That's not the case, okay? So what we have to do is give our students the kind of support they need. You can't come to school tearing things up now. Let me, let me say clearly that, you know, I don't, I don't leave a law, period. So when you come to school, your job is to get your education, and our job is to make sure you get that, okay? So we want to support students, we're gonna be redesigning our alternative school. And looking differently, we got students, some students who have an issue, who come to school in the morning and get that for whatever reason they have, so I'll let you down. So how do we respond to that? So what we gotta do is look at the needs of our students and use this as an opportunity to do some more redesign work throughout, especially in our alternative classes. So my question, the question was about discipline and how to listen across the board, listen, again, we haven't figured it out, I think we're in a better place, the numbers are all over there, but the numbers don't tell it, it needs to be handled. And so what we want to do is improve behavior and give children, students, young people the support they need so that when they come to school, they realize the importance of getting a good education. That's more than anything else. I want you to see the value in, I, I'm only standing here tonight with, uh, everybody I'm suited with because I got a good job. I got a good job because I got a good education. I got a good education because my grandma, who cleaned up folks' houses in the daytime, who was setting the job, made education a priority in our house. And she didn't, she had, she went back to her G P, so she made it important to us, and that's what's important to me. I have to send my child to practice school after the border, my child goes to high school. So let me tell you that, what we gotta do, and I don't care what age the child is, especially our black male students, because we got some issues there, and we gotta fix that. But we don't fix it by just saving it, we gotta do something about it. And that is providing the kind of, uh, policies and support for our students, so that they can get it.
All right, we're gonna stick with option three again, this one has to do with sports. So if we went with option three, what would be the impact on the, uh, sports, the sports program?
Eric and Larry, y'all great. So, um, I had a mom who came to me last week with a request from tour, and she asked a question about sports and how we're gonna change sports. Uh, you know, one of the things that I think it would do, um, and, and this hasn't been, uh, at the forefront, it's, it's all of our academics. Um, but I think that if you had one huge high school, it would change the game, um, for athletics in this community, but it could be a lot of ways. I think it would make us a virtual powerhouse, if you will. However, the concern mama had was, you know, well, you know, my child may not be necessarily the, um, um, you know, Saquon or Odell, um, that would be, you know, at the top of the chain on varsity, so what about my child who feels is athletic and is willing to play? Um, so, uh, we reached out to Nisha, we're getting more information, I don't have all the answers to it, but what I can tell you is that we just get some other big high schools, like the potential ones that can come in our district, uh, and acknowledging the importance of giving many students opportunities. What we did find was that you can have as many JV teams as you want. Certainly varsity teams are the ones that who to look at, depending on whatever the sport may be, uh, look at when it comes to recruiting students for, uh, uh, life after high school, division one, division two, et cetera. Um, you know, one of the things that came up today, I think we were having to do this today, uh, earlier when we'd be on Monday. And when you have a school that is virtually pretty powerful, then you get working. And so that's, uh, plus for all students, irrespective of whether, uh, you're playing basketball or, um, also football. So we, we will have absolutely, um, uh, look at every, um, option around athletics. Uh, and, and, and that's why, you know, you, it's important for you to share your experience with us so that we can, um, find it.
So your next question is on, um, the STEAM school, I have about thirty, forty on STEAM. Um, basically, a lot of the questions are asking, why can't we have STEAM in all of the high schools? What will be the requirements for, uh, to get into STEAM, um, the STEAM high school? Uh, what are the qualifications for the teachers, uh, for that STEAM high school? And the biggest thing is, do you think the STEAM school is supposed to make a big difference?
Yeah, so, um, let me, let me say this. So we spend a lot of time, not just in purpose, of course. I work in Chicago, open school, um, south side of Chicago, I work in North Carolina, Virginia, Gulf of, Gulf of Penney. Um, I absolutely believe in what, uh, we're doing with our state high school, uh, state middle school, and I believe that half of state high schools will be parallel. And let me tell you why. So physically, you can't have every program in every school, okay? That doesn't mean that you would deny anybody or not allow people to, students to, to enroll. Uh, the STEAM school right now is for our get-to-day students, okay? And also for students who may not have made the get-to-day cut, uh, but can also apply to get into the STEAM school, okay? Uh, you have to have certain grades, um, and if you have, um, you know, an ability or you've got talent, uh, then you can also, uh, display that in the application process. Um, we have to make sure that we provide access to all students. We have not done that for our get-to-beats, we have not. And let me say clearly that, um, our get-to-beat population, our get-to-beat students run the game. We have black students, white students, bi-racial students, uh, sixty percent of our students in our state school are black. Um, thirty-nine percent of our students in our state school are white. Um, we have, um, I think more girls than boys, I'm not saying, I'm quoting on that. Um, and I absolutely believe in, and I absolutely believe that we have to keep pushing our students to excellence. I think we have to give them access to that. And what we've done is, as a country, we focused on students who are struggling and they're media being, that look like me, that struggle. I struggled in, in school, uh, until I got some great teachers. And let me tell you that great teachers make the difference. And we have to give every one of our students in our district access to that, every one of them. We can't get E P S out. And that, and that, and, and that's, that's not, that's, that's not the students, um, who are struggling academically, but all those students who are in it. So to the question, and I, and I know some, some strong feelings about it, please, if you would, just ask a question, now, I'll, I'll promise y'all stay at home till we're just gonna answer any question you ask. Um, let, let, let me also say that it, it is critically important to be clear about this. No decision has been made by any entity, we're gonna hear you, we're gonna hear everything you gotta say. Uh, but what do I stand on this issue for asking you to believe? That, uh, we have to provide that as well as I, I like the new high school, uh, process, uh, and I like the new construction. Now, here's the piece that I didn't address a minute ago with the discipline piece that it, it option three was chosen. But, so, so here this part way. Let's just say hypothetically speaking, that the board, based on the feedback they got, went with option three, went to the community, the community supported it, and then we're in, that, that, beyond April twenty nineteen, we're gonna build a new high school. The design of that school is gonna be everything for this, this success of this school, okay? We have to make sure that we design it in ways so that we provide, if you remember, up here, um, I put this, uh, fly here, so we would have a, and the floor is already doing this. And we would have a ninth grade academy, and we would specifically focus on our freshman students, because I said earlier that we have a higher failure rate at that grade than any other grade in high school. So we would have a ninth grade academy that will be built and designed, the school building itself will be designed for students, so the students who are ninth grade would be in this brand new amazing space. Same thing with tenth grade, we would have another wing or design so that our sophomores will be there as well. And then by the time students get eleven and twelve grade, they're ready for the next step. When students make it to that, to their junior year, they see graduation inside. So, so we worked with the University of Chicago just this past year, a floor had a date last year, and NSB is gonna start this summer working with the University of Pacifico to get freshmen on track. And what that does is, uh, it allows us to be able to give all students access to the same kinds of experiences that the students in the STEAM school, uh, will get. So no student would be denied, and even if, if, if there was another option, if we put even option three, but option two, the same approach. That is why, that is why we applied for the National Bachelor Award. That is why we, uh, are partnering with equal opportunity schools, so more students are getting access to advanced placement classes, to give them that access to college courses while they're in high school. That is why, uh, Jake, uh, Boach, he is our C T director, and, you know, he introduced to the, uh, board a few months back, uh, uh, P L T W, computer science, uh, courses, because we have to have more students able to go in our traditional program and in the STEAM program, so we want to give all students access to those same kinds of experiences while they're in high school. And, and, and I think that that would be the game changer when students are taking the kind of courses that are preparing them for that. So we gotta get it on par, if you don't mind, and that's the asset, okay?
All right, on this one, I'm gonna stand up. Uh, 'cause this is a question that would probably involve some of my fellow board members to respond to as well. Um, and it really has to do with, which is on everybody's mind, is as we move through this, and if there are schools that are going to be closed, and you can imagine with option three, uh, the impact that it'll have on our community, and this person would, parentheses, the cost. Because a lot of people get caught up in the financial cost of schools, and we talked about it, uh, in the past presentations, and, um, in order for us to really move the district where we feel it needs to go, and we need to go a long ways. Because right now, what we're doing is not working, all right? Um, we're still on the seven, seventy percent A P R, seventy percent is not great. You know, I, I wish for us to get to the eighties and to the nineties, and to be a district of distinction as my fellow board members want, as well as every teacher and administrator wants. Um, in order to do that, in order to put the resources into the classroom that we need to, we need to free up money, we need to hire more educators. We need to provide support to our students and to, uh, our district staff. Because what's happening is we're spending so much money on paint, it's not making its way into classroom support. So, but there is a cost to it, um, and it's something that all of us share. Everybody here on the boards either have kids in the district, have family in the district, have attended the schools themselves, um, someone worked in the district. And we're attached to the district as all of you are, and, um, many of us live near schools. And, well, schools might be on the list if, if it ever comes to that. So the conversations that I know I've been having with people is repurposing, is engaging people in conversations, that if a school was to be identified to be closed, what would we do with it? There's no way, I'm standing here now, that I want a vacant school building next to anybody's house, okay? It's because all it does is bring down our property values, it increases opportunity for, um, people to move into it. It, it deteriorates our community, but we have to find a way to repurpose them, to reuse them, or bring them to the ground. But I do not want vacant school buildings in our school district, okay? That's, that's just how I feel, because we need to move the district forward, and we need to move North County forward. What's happening in North County is that younger families are not moving in. The ones that are, are transients, all right, they'll come in and they spend three months here, maybe six months, maybe a year. They're not buying houses, they're not being stable within our community, and we need that in order for our district to keep moving forward. So a good, strong housing stock, a good, strong school district will help with that, and vacant school buildings will not do that. So that's just kind of my personal opinion, you got something to say, Dr. Turner?
Hello, everyone, um, I, I just wanna say this, um, this is all personal to many of you sitting in the room. It's personal to me, I worked in the district for fifteen years, I don't want Holman closed, I don't want Bridge to close, I was principal at those two buildings. But as a board member, one of the most difficult decisions that we're gonna have to make is what schools have to close. We have to be prudent, we have to be good stewards of your money. And if we have buildings that are at, at, not at capacity, and they're at thirty percent, that means we are giving away a lot of money that can go directly to students. So the basic thing for me is how, how do we get the money that we are using in utilities and painting and lawn service at buildings that are, at, are at thirty percent? Is it responsible for us as a board to continue to have that building, or those buildings operating? I want you to know that some people's feelings are gonna be hurt because of the, the, the emotional part that you didn't have for your school. I believe in neighborhood schools, I believe in strong schools, I am an educator, I believe that teachers are very important, we have a lot of questions up here for teachers. I wanna protect our teachers, but most of all, I wanna protect our students and our neighborhoods. And I think you've already said it, um, that it's important that we not have empty buildings, that's one thing that I really agree with. We cannot have empty buildings, uh, standing for long periods of time. So please understand that the board has a very difficult decision to make, and it will not be based upon what we feel, it will be based upon what is the most, most prudent thing to do for everyone in this room and everyone who lives in this district. So that's why, you know, having an outside source coming in and looking at the programs and looking at the buildings and looking at, we have some buildings that, that are very difficult to renovate and to keep up for in terms of technology, we can't, uh, keep the technology going, some of the center body buildings don't allow for it as well as some other buildings. So, again, please understand the position that we are in, because yes, I know the bug stops with us. You voted us in, and we're going to try to do the best that we can do for every one in this room, but most of all, those students who stood up, that's what we're here for, thank you.
Excuse me, Mr. Robb, the question that you referenced was mine, and I think it's important when the audience is here, they question I at Mount Great Forest. It says that when they closed Berkeley, in Berkeley, it caused the crime rate to go up, the property value to drop as well. So I wanted to know, have you all considered the implications of closing schools in the community for that statement? So it wasn't just about buildings being empty, it was also about the So wasn't just about buildings being empty, it was also about the increase in crime rates, just like the church when you take the use out of the community, it is a dead community. So that was the question I asked. It would be nice if you would raise the question so that we could have an opportunity to know what you're talking about.
So I'm gonna address just a part of that, okay? And I'm not gonna take any more questions from, from the audings except for from the green card. But we are, in, on these cards, there are multiple questions, alright, for themes, steam, option three, sports, uh abandoning buildings, whatever it may be. So we're not gonna be able to read every question. Now, the district will be posting questions and answers on the website. But for this forum, for this purpose, we're not gonna be able to answer every question. Do you have anything to add, Dr. Davis? No, not doing today, no. Dr. Davis has something to say?
Maybe trying to pry it. Uh, and, and let me say, I, you know, I, I would say as long as you want to do it and try to address and so. Let me apologize if I either come across as being grinning or rude in any kind of way. I, I absolutely like, I had students from Berkeley call me um and ask the question about Berkeley. Uh, and I, and I absolutely, uh, and I didn't go to Berkeley High School, so I cannot stand to shoot somebody in the knee. Um, and so I, and I, and I respect, and I respect everybody who went to school here. Uh, and I had some of the same kind of conversations with people who went to North. And uh shared some of those same kind of concerns. The school has, the law has matured. Last week, we were in a court. And I sit in a court uh with some folks who were graduated from the floor high school, some of the same kind of concerns. And so just to your, your point, and um, I wanna address the issue of schools in the community and the importance of having that in the field. So I wasn't here when uh Berkeley High School was built, but I have talked to quite a lot of. Yes, sir.
I was also paying for it.
And I, and I, just a minute, let me finish, and I'll, I'll be happy to, to, to you. Um, so, but I did have a lot of conversations with people who lived at Berkeley uh high school, part of Berkeley, or Brooklyn Berkeley community. Uh, and I absolutely hear what you're saying. Um, and again, notice that that has been made on anything. We presented three options. Ask us to hear you when it comes to uh concerns about Berkeley High School. Uh, and I'll tell you also that I've had some, some concerns from folks at all the three high schools. And so that option three certainly, while it absolutely has a lot of benefits, um, there are also some emotional attachments that everyone in the school about their work.
If the question I get is also about Berkeley, then we're talking about that, that's not just talking about the things that are statistically significant. There's also practical significance that goes along with it. It's not just that our building is going to be hurt. The fact of the matter is that we have community, our community, South of Two Seventy, where the times of their crime is going up, their times of their property values coming down, their times of not being heard. We don't have money to do all this stuff with these different programs. How do we have all this money to keep fighting the, the school board decision, to fight the federal judge's decision, the fact that we have, the way we have school board elections here in our district, fighting like the thirteen million, we got money for everything else.
Candy races.
The crime is going up, our property values dropped, but we're talking about, let's talk about the school costs, their reputation.
Okay, you know, we need to change, we need to change, we need to change.
Thank you, Mr. Porter.
Thank you. Let us talk, let us have a point here. Just to be clear, you've given us a very slick presentation in Southwood. Have we been afforded our period, you know, like, because we don't know. It's not a fair one to be a group, and we want all this group, however, we understand the past. And understand the past, we understand what's happened in the past. And what we want is what everybody else wants. This one, we want the same thing, we want the same thing everybody else wants. Give us an opportunity to have it, and it passed. Let us speak. Right now, you're dictating to us, and we feel like you're a railroad, and that's you running right through us. It's a slick operation, sounds good. Give us an opportunity to have it, thank you.
Dr. Davis, I'd just like to finish one more. The problem is, we got a lot of questions, a lot of these green cards that you passed out in the first hand. But Dr. Davis, look, but I'm tired of hearing about your grandparents. My grandparents, and it's not against me, but I think that we need to go and take care of what needs to be taken care of. We need to hear from the president of the club. This ain't nothing, this ain't got nothing to do with this meeting. I talk to this man all the time. This ain't nothing we need to hear from. Okay, but the issue is that we need to handle three courts, great, they need to be heard from. We as presidents need to, we need to be heard. We report to them, Berkeley name on this court.
So let's, let's do it, let's do this. Let me, let me, let me just, and I, I listen, um, I'm, I'm actually, give me the opportunity, please. So this is what, let me try this. Um, and you know, uh, I'm not trying to be slick at all. Uh, and let me, let me just, and I, and I, but I, I get it, you know, I, I can only imagine how some people feel. And again, like I said before, I'm from Berkeley, I will never leave Berkeley or Brooklyn, but I respect you for, for everybody who's from where you are. And I absolutely wanna hear what you guys say, so please, if I, if I disrespect you in any way, I, please, please forgive me for that. So let, let me get this in, and I think this will help some, especially to someone who's in private saying anything, so. Is let, this is what I'll do. Let me take the card, I'll read the card, and the person's name on it, and then if you have, I'll try to get to as many, you say as long as you want, maybe as you can, I'll read the name of the card, and if you want a name with the question that you asked, I think that's fair. Uh, I'll read it, and then I'll try to respond as quickly as I can, and I won't give you more stories. Uh, and then, uh, if you wanna, wanna say anything, then I'll, I'll send it to that person who's part of it, that character. So uh here's a question from um Patrice Johnson. Patrice, okay, so Miss Johnson says, how many elementary schools will be closed? And how many schools, elementary schools will be available? Uh, and. Area of one, thank you. Uh, so we don't know exactly if, if it's Johnson, here's the thing. I mentioned earlier, um, and the streets are doing a lot of work around our building assessments. And so what we will know is, once we get that kind of information, uh, we'll be able to look at what school buildings are physically sound and each, and what others that we probably need to think about twice. And so the board said a minute ago, there, there potentially will be some, some school closures. What schools they are, we don't know yet. Uh, we won't know that until we do those assessments. So that we know exactly what school makes physical sense. Let me give you a quick example. Um, you know, we have one building out there that would cost twenty-six million dollars to renovate because of the walls in the building, because of the infrastructure that's deteriorating. It doesn't make physical sense to spend that, because I want the building uh to renovate that. It makes more sense to do it mentally. We're not gonna use that facility at all.
Um, I have two young kids, I have a two-year-old, and I have a seven-year-old who's in elementary. Um, we live two blocks from home elementary, it's our neighborhood school. And my husband and I have been talking about putting our kids in Catholic school, and we're not in Catholic because it's the only option for our neighborhood, so we can stay where we live. Um, we love the house that we bought, but we need to suddenly to, um, pack it with school this year. So, and we don't want to leave. So, um, it's important to me, cause I have a young, I have a young family, I have two little boys. Um, and it's just me and my husband, we're not from St. Louis, we grew up in St. Louis. Uh, we're actually Hurricane Chris friends at New Orleans. So, um, conscious that it's roots for our family is very important to us, for these uh neighbors. And we just have to stay in the school district on long term for us, you know, we have twelve kids up, when you look at it. So this, what, you know, what you're discussing is, it is very personal to me. Um, as it is for everybody else who is here with half the kids, you know?
And absolutely, and I, I appreciate your comments. Uh, and I want you to say, honestly. Uh, and so, again, we, we, I can't even stand it if I don't tell you what schools will come back as the better ones to hold on to because of the physical and physical sound and stuff. What we have to do though is, look at all of our spaces. Um, I can give you an eye ball, look at the students, they just look good. There's other, uh, infrastructure issues that we have to look at, specifically, you know, some materials that just all can't play on at all. I think that we have to look at, and it makes, it makes physical sense uh to do the assessments that we're doing now, on everyone around the world, so that whenever we get those concrete results, we can say to you, Miss Johnson and your husband, that listen, this building may or may not be of this space for us to hold on to, and be required. And at least from there, you'll know why we made the decision. It's not a, just a slick way of moving forward, it is about resources. And, and, and what I can say exactly is, we cannot, we cannot decide, we're talking about Catholic schools and other options, parents want options, right? They want good schools, period. But let me tell you, I don't care what community you're in, out there, who's in the seat, or whatever it is here. It takes money to make these things happen. And in order to make them happen, you gotta make these kind of hard decisions. Um, and again, we don't know what decision to give us with the offer date. But what we will do is make sure that, I said earlier, that uh the, the two year ahead and the preschool do some other presentation, uh presentations. So that you can ask those questions, that look at each facility, we'll have a layout of every school building. So we can look at the, the new process, and then they will respond to some of those questions and, you know, make a decision. The board, we'll get this data, like I said, latter part of June, July. We'll get on the ground running in August, when school starts that, and we'll do some things in the summer and hope for some. And have some meetings starting to present that data. Because when the board makes the decision in the October window, we wanna maybe have more community engagement around that, okay? You get another card. So, um, and what we're trying to do, because some folks have put their card up a long time ago, is if you don't have the type of card in, I'll be glad to take it. And again, I'll try to get to that again. Pedro, council, did I say it correctly? I'm sorry. In drill, okay? So what about the relationships that certain students and future dads built throughout the years? I guess the board. Think that trust will be lost in this process? Yeah, that's a good one. Um, you know, um, I wouldn't call these students out. But, you know, there was a similar issue to what some students had raised to me uh just a couple days ago. And, you know, so schools are about relationships, right? And about teachers. I said earlier about that, we're lying where I am to look at the teachers. Uh, and it's really important. Um, so we're, teachers, just wait for me to answer it quick, especially teachers who may work at, uh, in any of our districts, if you were to teach this, this could get in here. So we have probably teachers that are here right now. And, and let me say that you may, uh, did you go to Berkeley? Yes. So you may have a major teacher or teachers that are here, that are still here, that you had, um, and that you obviously tested here, and so the folks here did a good job of it there. And so, you know, those relationships are critical, you never forget them. I mean, you never forget, I don't care who it is. And, you know, um, whatever decision we made, that should never be compromised. You know, one of the biggest reasons that kids drop out of school is because, and this is, you know, this is what the Navy says, and, you know.
The biggest reason kids quit is that they saw the money first, and the money keeps them.
Right, so, and then I, I agree with you on that. Uh, but, but a lot of it is because of relationships, and, you know, kids will say this one thing. Nobody knew I wasn't even in it. Nobody knew I was not even at school. You didn't even know I was important. That's what kids are saying all the time, for those ones who drop out.
So, so I'm not old school, not gonna make everybody feel like that. Derek Kyle. I'll be to the future student, basically, I love that.
Yes, sir, yes, sir. So, let me say this, that's a good point, and both of you, but then I need, I need to add that.
That's the one thing, you said all the teachers, you said we got, uh, sixty-two percent of teachers that are in the dark. So all of that has been put in on these programs, and each school is, uh, making everybody relocate to this joint one program. They're still taking the challenges, you should say, on the other dollars, you should say, cost of money, you know what I'm saying? So we built all this up on this, 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 this basis?
Yeah, so, you know, and any, I mean, and nothing has been decided, but let me say that, um, it makes more sense, dollar wise, when you have the resources in two places, than in four places.
More sense, dollar wise, or a two year?
No, it, it, they absolutely take the dollars in order to get, to get children to follow you. You just can't just say quality, and then they'll have the dollars.
For the quality, so they, I think, uh, Berkeley's pretty good, I mean, Berkeley's pretty good.
So let me get this next question. Um, so she came in, she here, this man. So her question was, uh, will transportation costs go up when students who could normally walk become uh bus riders uh when putting uh elementary grades? So that's a question that someone probably did, uh, when it comes to transportation. I know Jim, the teacher, Jim Prosser, is our student back up there, Jim has been a part of this entire process in terms of the districts and all. So really depend on the options is, um, when you have fewer schools, then you certainly have fewer bus riders, right? You still have the same number of students. Uh, so you depend on where they live and what schools are in that, that current district. So a lot of, uh, unknown factors right now, because we don't know exactly what school building uh will be, uh, for whatever community is going to be serving, and then how many students will be, um, in that district or street.
Um, first off, that's one of the concerns that I have, and I know a lot of families who have taken multiple very often. And they rely on older siblings to walk, and younger siblings to walk for. But I noticed that right now, apparently, we already have a survey going around about changing the time, and all that stuff. Change the time, and the citizens, I mean, are, are parents kind of something that's a situation where we need more, more answers here? Are we in that, if that's not even a lot of people, is, you're walking home with yourself, right?
Uh, yeah. So one of the, that's a good question, and so one of the things, though, with the last survey that went out of our school town, is we absolutely consider, um, students who, so we can tell that number of students who are elementary, who, students who walked out of siblings at a secondary school, um, that's around thirty percent of our students in our district, that have actually somebody's siblings and, and in one of the other schools. Uh, and so there are a couple of options that are there, and we, one of them actually has elementary individuals, one has elementary children, and then one has elementary later. Right now, those numbers who are our latest ones that start, right, like right now, they start around two fifty, and close out the fifty. The latest start time would be another ten minutes behind, about nine. But there's also, in considering that, um, is could we change the time so that we have elementary individuals, but you have maybe a, a middle school student who's there earlier, or a high school student who's in later, so that you have a tight. It won't address everyone's issue, uh, but there certainly are some options that depend on the family.
Split kindergarten through, if you take sixth graders through the, if you split kindergarten through the grade, you may have a first grader, and a fifth grader, and the second graders would normally walk through the house, and they're walking to home. Suddenly, you're gonna have a second grader walking home, the third grader, and a ninth class. And those classes, I don't know what, I don't know how to change, I don't know, I don't know, I don't know.
So, Antonio. So, Antonio Nelson. What would be the teacher to student ratio for average classes, uh, as in option two and three? Antonio. Hey, so, um, so it went there. Um, so his question is about, uh, student teacher ratios, uh, and at each one of the options two or three, but currently option one is about the same, except we have no students here, yeah, probably with option one. Uh, so even right now, I've met with every principal over the last couple of weeks, looking specifically at staff in hand. So it's a little tricky, um, because it's different at the, uh, elementary and middle school than it is at the high school in terms of student teacher ratio. Uh, and so what we do is, when we look at student teacher ratio at our, uh, elementary and middle school, we largely look at, uh, teachers, uh, who are, uh, tempered and improved, fifth, eighth grade teachers. And then in, uh, middle school, like in sixth, seventh, and eighth grade teachers. fifth, grade teachers, and then in, uh, middle school, like, six, seven, eighth grade teachers, who use math, science, English, and social studies, right? What we, what we do is, because we, uh, share resources, especially at the elementary level, we don't factor in our teachers, our faculty teachers, um, in our elementary schools in particular, because we know, and if we were to, if we were to take the total number of the teachers totally, and the total number of the students, uh, then that would give us certainly a smaller class size, but it would be realistic, because, um, you know, you wouldn't have, uh, the same number. You actually have, uh, teachers who you have to dedicate to elementary school. Some elementary schools, for example, is, is my point, uh, share physical education to you. So, teacher may be here, uh, once for one day, then they move to another one. So we don't factor in any of the teachers, when it comes to elementary schools, and, and some other businesses too. Um, high school is totally different. High school is different because, uh, every class is the same length of time, whether it's an eleventh class or a non-eleventh class. Every class at the same time. So we do look at the total numbers of students in our school, and then look at the total number of teachers, and then we just do something to divide. Now, let me say that, um, you know, certainly, Sec Park has some regulations around class sizes. Uh, we generate tax dollars based on the number of students in our buildings. And this can add some regulations around what a class size ought to be. Uh, I'll quickly say, kindergarten, second grade is twenty-five students. Uh, you know, third and fourth grade is twenty-seven students. Uh, fifth and sixth, maybe option fifty is, uh, thirty students. If you get a kindergarten teacher and a class with, uh, a huge number of students, number of students, it becomes very difficult for her, and for them to do the work they can do in these supports. Uh, and so what we're doing now, and that's the first question to ask at this point, because that was first with Taffel's staff meeting, what we're doing now is specifically to look at all of our schools across the district. Um, I've had conversations with all the principals, in fact, uh, we were in, uh, a speech at a meeting the other day, and, um, we're looking at how to maximize our high school positions. Nobody will lose a job, they're not going to lose a license, but if we have an opening, um, position, an open position, or a wooden, uh, or a few open positions at the secular level, we may transfer those positions if a person retires or resigns, and move that position to the elementary school, so that we can take some pressure off of our kindergarten or secondary teachers. Yes, sir, please.
Is there, uh, is there an ideal number that you, that you see, or that you believe for, in this area?
So I, I believe that it'll be smaller in elementary schools in particular. Um, that goes back to some of what I said earlier. We talk about pre-k, uh, classes, then our kindergarten approved, second grade classes. So that's all they have, pre-k youth schools. I absolutely believe that our, uh, pre-k kindergarten person, second grade teachers, all have, you know, some really good class sizes, so they can manage, uh, making sure students get this support they need while they're in the first grade. And then when they get older, if they have that opportunity to develop in that way, uh, then, you know, you can look at, uh, we, we, twenty-five across the board is what we've been using. Even though at the higher grades, third grade up, you can have more than that, we've been using twenty-five across the board, even for high school. I believe that elementary schools, such as Catholic or recent, the kids, they're babies, they're younger, and you've got to get together that school. Yeah. So, that's a good follow-up. Uh, so, so you, so you have one school, and you have, you know, faculty, faculty, I can show you. So you've got all the teachers in one space, right? And you have, and this is high school, so you have all your high school teachers, and all your high school students. This is a even practice. You take one, you buy by the other, take another student, buy teachers to do it. And, and, and for the high school, for the high school level. Yeah. So, I, you know, um, so we have some small classes, uh, at our secondary level. Uh, we have some opportunities, and we have to make these decisions based on some of what I know people all that, I was on our phone. Uh, but at the same time, we've got all the mature, you know, that, that amount of elementary students, right? Because that's, to me, where you got some more of those. Yeah, so... Yeah. So, you know, it has its blessings and downsides. One, one of the things that did come out of my last meeting was, I had some personal thoughts, uh, option three, for example, is not that I actually want to make it. It's, it's hooked up that out, and so we're, uh, team members, that you all, when people are gonna know that, so that by the time we get there next week, we'll have. In fact, I think I'm very interested in that. Uh, that we have the broken bonds, and really think about, um, what does this drive up the mountain? Because there, you know, I'm not telling you that they're saying, you know, beating the cream, that you don't want to go out, right? Uh, and while I like option three, because it gives you opportunity, that's in progress, uh, just like some of the other, uh, options, yeah, okay? So, I know, that is absolutely not true. Yes, ma'am. Absolutely. Let me, let me, let me get him. I know we've got to close, but let me get him, and I'll... Yeah, so that's what we hope we're doing right now. Right. So let me, let me do this, because I got a couple of folks, and, and I know that people have to go. Yeah, so... Yeah, I agree with you. That, and, and so, I mentioned a few of those things, uh, earlier, I thought specifically about, especially in our high school. So that's what we have to do to redesign, or having more students taking all of those classes while they're in high school now. That's what we're doing right now. Uh, IBD is starting, or the teacher process, until we get authorized. That's what we're doing right now. Uh, we offer, and operate, uh, more P O G W project, equal access, so students can fully, rather than in our schools, middle and high schools, right now. Those are the things that we are doing right now. So let me get her question, because her, her question was, let me, your question will be, I know. So, so let me, let me get those first, I'll be glad. So, you, you asked a question about the name, I think it was, and that's someone quite a bit, uh, and so there's policy that guys with names and all new school, that's another whole process. So, so that, so that's what's happening, but it is, and we have records right now to go way back, uh, from schools that aren't even here anymore now. Uh, and so, that, so we keep those records as the agent, uh, purpose and source of school history. So if somebody were, um, who graduated from this district, you know, forty years ago, we could go ahead and draw archives, and draw microfilm, and pull up all that data, uh, that they could give them. So, so there's a way to do that, but I, I know that the question, though, about the name of the school was pretty personal. That's the question. So, so let me get her, because she was standing up, and I'll be glad. And I know that we are, we'll, I apologize, but everybody, go ahead. Let me get me a popcorn.
Because again, you're talking to us, and you're, you're telling us this is gonna happen. We didn't get to sit down and parent with you, to have a conversation about this before you all put it, put pen to paper. So now I'm asking, before you put pen to paper, and you start finding contractors, saying, this school's gonna close, this school's gonna close, and this one's gonna close, because you all sit down for everything else. You sit down for all trees, and things, and things like that, for everything else. Where do we get security options? Where do we get security? Where do we have options to give you feedback on what is best for us?
So... So, so let me try to respond here. So, when we had our meeting last week, uh, and for, we had feedback and parents, and back before nine in, uh, and specifically talked about, we reached on, um, Wednesday, I think it was, this week, after we had last week, about what we needed to do different, and, uh, that was one of the reasons for reception. I think they gave you the question, and all, and so, let me, uh, if, if, listen to what we hear tonight, um, obviously, there's a need, uh, to mention that we responded to, you know, our community thing. Uh, and so, that's, that's something to consider, um, and, and there is a way to do that. Uh, there is a way to do that. So, so last week, we did, and we did different this time, was, we had all kinds of questions, that working on those same words, different things, and it was just pretty awkward, so we went and did just use the cards, and then we separated them out, no questions about, you know, um, uh, smart awards last week, that necessarily didn't need to be answered in that venue. And so we, so we put them all on cards, and then we separated it out tonight, so that there are restructuring questions, and then questions that pertain to other things. So we could try to get more, and obviously, there's a whole lot more questions, which is important. Uh, and so, we'll do it here, the feedback tonight, and then think about how we can do that to get to school north, and get our budget next Monday. Yeah, so, 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 I, I apologize. I was thinking you asked me about, like, publicly speaking, so you could give that feedback, while you're getting, to your turn to... Yes, ma'am. Okay, okay.
So maybe the board, somebody from the board can take that question rather than you, but somebody needs to tell me at some point, how I'm going to be able to say, I feel like this is the best option for my child.
So, let, let me try to get a question out there, like, if you, you'll benefit. So...
And we feel, for citizens of Berkeley, we're from, we get away broken, and we protect, we involve, and take away from, we're still personally out of our community, and that's why you see some looking around everywhere, because it doesn't matter what any option is, picking a school that we have to fight to be Berkeley off. That works to be personal, it really does. I make sure that I can see it. We've got a track coach here, that was a national track coach in the nation, a lot of pride, we have a lot of pride in this community. And we want the best education, we call it the best education of this community. We appreciate this from all of this community. This community will have a hard time. This community, they go through a lot, we're gonna have to air foot, we're gonna have everybody, and they're cutting us up. So they're asking, and they're concerned because they want a good community, and they want to have a better education for our kids. I came to this community all the way to seventy-four, just other alumni here, to be able to, we were part of the first team to win the state championship in eighty-two. So we put our pride very strong. And when somebody tells us, no matter what we had in the United States, they say, I'm for Berkeley, you're a fan, you're a fan. No other school in this district has that same feeling as we have. And that's why those people out there, building a pain, they're putting building a burden, that's really true, a lot, a lot. And they just say, hey, keep our school, keep us together, help us get better education, to give us better education, we will work with. The alumni, we try and help, we want to help out with the school, because we build the pain. We're involved here and say, hey, we'll be there, we'll help out with those things. Take advantage of the situation, and there, I have to say, we definitely have the situation, but I understand why this community is hurting, because no other community has worked for this school, as we gave it their high school. We, uh, we had six erasements, we gave all of it to them. So we give it, give it Berkeley, it's given Berkeley, it's given to them, and Berkeley feels like, okay, now they're back. And everything that we gave their students, we have to fight. I was bothered when they broke us up, and it was a pain in the process. So, I, I, if you want to catch this one, that the people personally have a say so in that process, because there's a lot of pain in that community, all their high schools. We love our high schools, we love our people, we, there's, there's, our pride and all that, and everybody knows we do that, because I know Berkeley, they're different where they're at now. So, uh, thanks for the opportunity to talk. I appreciate what you guys want, but keep this school open.
So, I, I'll stay around. I'll stay around, I need to, because we are way back. Uh, but let me say this, though, and I agree with you, these young ladies who are here about getting feedback, uh, and the panel, the thing a minute ago, there, there are ways for them to do that, and I love that the talk of it, the element of work to go, uh, but we'll find a way to be able to get that feedback, that's important, and I appreciate what you had to say, and others too. Uh, but I, I don't want, you know, so six erasements, seven erasements, I would, I would, uh, to be able to do this, and we probably need some more meetings. And, and, and I, I cannot, you know, say I know I can deal with other elements, right? But what I can tell you is that, you keep listening, and again, don't, don't skip in that debate, because the options are out there, but I, but I appreciate your, your heartfelt words. So let me, so I noticed some other questions, and I'll stay right here. I, I'll sponsor, I'll say, as long as you want to do. Let me just let them do some other, and then for those who can stay around as long as you want to, I'll be there and stay around, I'll be gone. I just want to be respectful, everybody's kind of, thus immediately, and then just...
Let me share just a couple of things with you, that hopefully will help you know that there is an opportunity beyond tonight to also have a voice. Uh, first of all, the, the cards are up here, the board will give those to me and my team, and we will get the questions and the answers on the website as quickly as we can. Uh, I should be a little patient with this, because there are a lot of them. Um, you've seen the slides, hopefully cycling through on the left side of here. The district website is www.burgfloor.org. If you go to burgfloor.org/strong, that will take you to a page that has information about the process, it has questions from the last week's meeting, uh, and answers. These questions will be there, the timeline is there, uh, many other pieces, lots of information. There's, uh, there is information there for you to even ask questions after tonight, and we want to hear those questions. Uh, you'll also see a timeline there, or links to the timeline that breaks it out, so you can read it a little more easily than this timeline that I have up here. But you'll see on there, and coming soon to the website, will be opportunities for, uh, meetings where it's not a huge crowd in an auditorium, but it's people sitting around at a table, or in a smaller venue, where it's easier to have a conversation, and you don't feel like you have to shop to the bird. And Dr. Davis will be there, and he will answer questions, I'm sure, board members will be available as well. Um, the desire is for, um, everybody to have a voice, or for people to know that they can listen to, uh, not just speaking in their vacuum. So, um, Dr. Davis has said, your name, and I can talk to folks afterwards. And please, uh, use the resources that are at the website, um, connect with us for the meeting, keep moving, too.
I just thought about, I'm sorry, yes. Uh, we said we were talking, and then some of the questions about a little still there, uh, maybe, uh, why I could have, so, I could sort of, just hear more from the comments, and then figure out ways to respond. If I did not receive a question tonight, I'll stay around, and for those who have to go, please... to go, please, uh, you know, as, as you do, you don't want to hold your moment, and who do you need to say, and if you have a question, we urge not by any physicality, it's been a long time since, so, um, so we, if you're gonna, if you, and if you, if you want to stay around, and hear some of these questions, I'm happy to stay as long as you want to do.